She can just, the teacher's gonna help you do it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz I'm... I'm a visiting kind of... Felix. You can go outside.
It's light, guys. Right on. Okay, no, it works. Maybe I sent, I sent Nick a text before, he didn't consider that as... No idea. Is it turning? Do you see this, do you see the status cards? Like a lawn sign? Not bad for a... Not bad for a couple of YouTube videos, eh? I won't know until they start, uh... Until they start talking. Cause they're gonna be talking through. The mic's on, so... Okay, right on, it works. Alright, just wanted to let you know. Cool. Maybe, maybe text me, tell me what it sounds like. Okay, cool. Alright, bye. Oh, is this a directional mic? Whatever comes this week, it'll pick up. Okay, so that mic there, it's sounding off, that's what I was gonna say, maybe you should go on and... I just wanna see if my meters bounce. Cause they will be getting started here in about ten minutes, or whatever.
Oh yeah, just tell me, if you're not so...
We're gonna get started around ten minutes, right?
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna get started soon, about ten minutes. But if we can ask that all the grads put on their gowns right now, uh, that'd be beneficial. Thanks.
Before I kick live on YouTube. Usually they're up front, right? Yeah. Throw me off, believe that. A lot of sound, but...
Nimki, Madan. Uh, he's over here somewhere, I think? It's Evan. Is this Evan coming? Is he coming? Okay, perfect. Can I take it? Oh, okay. Oh, there he is.
He's a lady. He's a kid, I love that.
He's fine, he's fine, he's fine. What do you want in this area?
Lija, Lija. Lija, and going over, grab the gloves. For ten minutes, like, I think we'll be... Yeah? Or even at ten... And Nimki, take your mask down. For your photo, take your mask down. Throw your smile. They had to go yours, too.
Honey, so, I'm gonna ask all our graduates to make it over to the eastern door. Um, and then we'll have our procession begin. Yeah, if all our graduates can make it over there. Where's the drum?
Dina, you're in the way.
I don't...
Dina. She's gotta be here just soon. That'll not say the word here.
Okay, if I can get all our families standing up as the graduates make their way in.
Turn it up, Lija.
Good luck. Okay, so, welcome graduating class of 2021. To begin, we're going to have our opening prayer by Ms. Dorothy Kennedy.
Honey. Honey, bucho. I need to, uh, ask all of you to, uh, help in the prayer. And, um, in wishing each and every one of you graduates, uh, a great journey ahead. Siem nö, din mekva. Nanggo ije, mapi na jangwa, kona kasponujek. Na, vina absekaat, vina nomelsoat, vina najaat, vina nonkozawat, vina vina namadsoat. Abo sho, shen nö, vina jigein, kinegevo, hashettoin. Shwen meshna, nanggo, mapi vandam, kalambo, na jangwa, pasponujek. Vire, vandam vina, vina absekaat, chaskonrami kode, idapke. Ni bna, tashvanda, keko, ibe kheedana, shashe. Minat ni bna, vini kheedana. Ni bna gevo, eshanambo, geleinat. Minat geina, eshetbeedavsoat, eshenkodramkesat, vini, vini daadakkeina. Eswen meshna, nadmo, vanda, vina kene, vina kesea. And ask Creator to, uh, look at us on this special day. To, uh, to, uh, guide us, to help us through our journey. Your educational journey to higher learning. And, uh, I ask for guidance and for, uh, special, special, uh, help in, uh, in that journey for you today. And, uh, wishing you well and, uh, um, much blessings for, for everyone that's here. Good luck.
Good luck, Ms. Kennedy. Okay, so, moving along, our next address is coming from our vice principal, Ms. Jackie Craig.
Alright, good morning, oh fine graduates, it's a beautiful day for you. Um, yes, the, uh, principal sends her regret, she's unable to, uh, be here today. She's asked me to, uh, fill in for her. So, I would like to welcome all the guests, the family members, graduating students. Today marks a very special time in your life. You will no longer be sitting in one classroom with one teacher and the same peers. Instead, you will be becoming much more independent. You will have the opportunity to choose your classes and set your goals, your career goals. As I look upon all of you now, I see young people who have worked very hard in elementary school. You have mastered the skills required for the next stage of your education. Before me, I see leaders and writers...
New members to our renowned robotics program. And I encourage you to look into joining this team. Your former junior school principal, Mr. Harold Fox, will be there to greet you each morning like he did when you arrived at the junior school. Ms. Jillian Palche will be there for you to approach and talk to, guiding you where to meet your needs academically, socially, and sometimes when things become challenging as well. And each and every teacher and staff member will be there to plan exciting and engaging learning to help you proceed through high school onto your next steps in life. They are a caring and dedicated team, and they can't wait for you to get their next school year. In conclusion, we have been very fortunate to have you as students of Oklahoma County High School. I'm honored to be here with you today. I'm even more excited though for the opportunity to be with you at this very same place to celebrate your grade 12 graduation in the future. Estnashin, grade eight grads. Migwich.
Migwich, Mr. Stark. Next, we have a guest speaker, Ms. Annie Wemigwans.
Hello. I just wanted to start by saying congratulations. It's not every day you see an accomplishment like yours. School is no easy task. It takes time, effort, and mental strength. So yeah, give yourself a pat on the back. I went to school at the high school year, and I did that because I thought it was important to know where you're coming. School is no easy task. I know at your age, I was definitely nervous about what comes next. A lot of people will ask you, "What do you want to be when you grow up? Where do you want to go?" It's okay to not know, or even to know and change your mind. What is important is to stay curious. Stay curious about the world around you. For example, when I was 12, I wanted to be a neurosurgeon. Then a few months later, an engineer. Then I changed my mind again. I wanted to be a politician. Then I decided a bioinformatics specialist. Why? Because it sounded cool. It wasn't even until I finished university that I did realize I wanted to be a nurse. So I stress, be curious, try new things, get involved at school, make friends, make mistakes, fail, then fail better. Until you find what you want or need, because while life may not always go according to plan, or it may not always be good, as long as you have hope and you stay curious, I promise you will get where you want to be. To end, I will leave you with a quote I live by. All we have is to decide what we will do with our time given to us. Game off the break.
Migwich, Ms. Wemigwans. Okay, so for our next speaker, as his former teacher, it is my pleasure to introduce this cohort's valedictorian, Mr. Adrian Manitowbi Bell.
Hello, hello. Hello, my name is Adrian. Sorry about that. I'm not used to being on the spot like this. Some of the speeches, like half of it is wind. So, sorry about that. If I'm being honest, I'm a little nervous about high school. Most of us probably are. But I'm still super excited to go to it. After seeing the virtual tour, I still got anxiety though. Pretty nerve wracking. So some of my first memories at Pawnee School, although when I first came to Pawnee School in grade eight, it was very... It was kind of scary, honestly. When I went to the gym back then, it was strange and familiar. Mostly because I'd never been there before. When I went to the gym back there, it was really scary. Again, it was really scary. When I was assigned to Mr. Arminika's class, I didn't really care, honestly. After, after, um, I think it was Ms. D. that gave the speech, I was excited. And at the end of grade eight, I didn't, I didn't really think about high school, honestly. I was just having too much of a great time with my buddies. But, um... In the future, Pawnee School has helped me prepare academically, basically. And... But from, but, ah, god damn it, I messed it up. Sorry about that. Okay, okay, I'm just gonna skip past that part. And I'm just gonna conclude. I'd like to thank a few people in the class, or crowd, for making my middle school years great. First, my first grade A teacher, Mrs. Nagba. She gave me a lot of confidence and motivation. So, thank you. Well, I'm pretty sure your bald head blinded me. That's why I'm wearing glasses now. Sorry about that. And second, uh, if I can find, yeah, it's Jacob Fox, for keeping me out of the long term. He gave me a lot of advice, so thank you for that. And my parents for coming over here. Thanks, Mom and Dad. And fourth, my friends, Justice and Janelle. They're, that guy, nosy eyes, yeah. Hey, guys. For, uh, I'd like to thank them for sticking with me. Yeah. Yeah, thanks. I'd like to end my speech with a quote. I don't know which one. I guess from here, I can't really find any audio quote. Use what you got to be the best that you can be, that you can be. And congratulations to me and the grade eight graduating class of 2021. Thank you.
Migwich, Adrian. Next up, we have our special awards. So how we're gonna work this is I'll call up each student's name. You'll come up. Ms. Clark will be able to hand out the award, and then you'll make your way back and we'll announce the next one, just to keep within COVID protocols. So our first award is for academic excellence. And that award is going to Ms. Haley Trudeau.
Congratulations.
Can I get a, oh, can I get a photo? Picture?
The next award is for Anish Nabamun Achievement Award. That's for Haley Trudeau and Jeremy Nagonegijic-Bell.
Again?
Congratulations.
Can you get a picture of the handoff? Here we go, man. Right on, brother.
For the Arts and Culture Award, we have Jessica Wemigwans and Tristan Wemigwans. The next award is for exemplary citizenship. This is going to Justice Manitowbi Trudeau. For Athletic Achievement, we have Adrian Bell, or Adrian Manitowbi Bell.
Awesome speech, man.
And our last award is for Best Attendance. It is Jessica Wemigwans and Carmine Wemigwans. There's one addition, and Carmine Wemigwans. You're gonna need to come back up here. You also received the Athletic Achievement Award as well.
You're athletic.
You're athletic, you can make your way back up.
I don't like that.
Now we're moving on to our grade eight graduate diplomas. So I'm gonna ask that Ms. Jackie Craig and Ms. Edith DeMossen Wood would please come up. We're gonna read off it. I'll have them explain the process to you.
All right, Annie Wakamakong. I'm very honored to stand up here in front of you all today. I've watched these students grow over the past five years, and it's a pleasure to call their name one last time. So here we go. Our first, oh, one quick mention when you guys come and get your diplomas. Come see Ms. Craig here, so you can give a little wave to everybody watching at home. All right, Ms. Janelle Akwenzi. Mr. Ethan Cooper.
Yeah, there we go.
We have a few absent today, but we're gonna call their names to honor them. Mr. Lucas Jaco, Ms. Eliana Lida, and Ms. Alyssa Lewis. Carson Manitowbi.
Can I get a photo? Get a picture for Ms. Craig? Awesome.
Cameron Manitowbi. Adrian Manitowbi Bell. Jeremy Manitowbi Bealik.
You forgot Justice. Nagonegijic. Nagonegijic.
Sorry, Jeremy, that was a typo in here. Jeremy Nagonegijic Bealik. Next, we have Justice Manitowbi Trudeau. Nmki Pelchay. Tristan Wemigwans. Another one absent today, Marlin Wemigwans. Jessica Wemigwans. Carmine Wemigwans. Another one absent today, Georgia Peduanokw. Shayla Peduanokw. And Haley Trudeau. All right, ladies and gentlemen, please give a huge round of applause for our 2021 graduates.
Okay, in closing, I'm going to ask that all our graduates rise up. And as the song plays, please make your way to the western doorway. After that, you'll be told where you can come back, and we'll talk about dismissal. Okay? Migwich. Congratulations, class of 2021! We're good? See you at 1 o'clock. I'd like to say migwich to everyone that helped make this possible, and we'll see you again at 1 o'clock.